But we shall soldier.
He has a thumbs up.
Okay. All right, so we were at the bank depository limits. So each year we have to designate the institutions for deposit of district funds and limits. For any one institution. Kathy, are there any changes recommended this year from prior years?
No changes.
It seems like there were fewer banks in the past. And I remember the nine million dollars depository, but I don't remember having nine different institutions on there. Or am I wrong on that?
No, we've always had those. We actually pulled up the minutes from last year.
Sure.
Same thing, so.
Okay, this is not to say that we have nine million dollars in each one of these banks.
But we could.
We could. Yeah, wouldn't that be a wonderful world?
No, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's gotta come to somewhere, but for whatever reason, I I seem to remember fewer numbers, but. I stand corrected, so thank you again.
Anyone care to offer a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the bank depository limits of nine million dollars to the institutions. Listed in the agenda.
All in favor, please, oops.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's like get ahead of us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, um, our annual appointed district legal counsel, who are they coming here?
And I recommend we stay with Alors and Cooney as our legal counsel.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation and not having objection to their service, I make a motion we approve Alors and Cooney as our legal counsel.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our official newspaper, I recommend we stay with the car newspaper and driftless multimedia. Is there official newspaper publication media?
I so move to approve the newspaper publication media. As to for newspapers and driftless media. As the newspaper publication media.
I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't have an opposed, but I was gonna insert a thud in there before we quickly got to vote. And that would be, I think it would be worthwhile. To have some sort of messaging on our district website. Or providing district-based information. For people to be able to go and. Read and look for some additional content and so on. I don't have a specific. Example in mind, but I'm thinking about potential school line referendum materials. Or potential. District-related academic achievement that happens at the lower grade levels. Have a have a write-up of some sort that. On the district website that. That parents in the community could access for. Any content.
It's just kind of. Specific, but you don't have a general, you don't have a specific content, but like student achievement. Public hearings.
We already have the the minutes and and so like that Darlene provides, and I don't know, we have to go and re redo that, but. You know. Having source of information that the district provides. On our district website. If there's an example that is workable at another district, it'd be worthwhile looking into something like that. I don't have. Specifics of it, I'm just looking for. Several years ago, Steve Peterson said that. Suggested in one of the salary negotiation meetings that the 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 teachers might enjoy. Providing some write-ups and a number of them have their their webpages and so on. But it's. You know, I think that the middle schoolers and some of their achievements all get recognized. Or. On the district website and I'm thinking mostly about academic or.
So the school, I think that's a great recommendation, but the school district website is not a. That wouldn't be fall into this category of publication media.
Yeah, no, no. No, this is this is kind of a.
It's a legal responsibility.
Yeah, this is what you're proving right now is you're just saying, hey, if we if we are gonna. You know, post something for ten days or less than, if we're gonna have post any public hearings, we're gonna do it to the newspaper. Cause we have to have a print media, although that'd be by the next year this time that may.
What I was talking about there probably doesn't apply to this discussion topic, so that's another conversation.
Okay, now just note that the previous motion was approved four to zero. Next, we have the twenty eighty agreement for food services provided to Saint Benedict's. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Oh, I would make a motion that we approve the twenty eighty agreement to. Food service to be supplied to Saint Benedict's schools presented.
All in favor, please say aye.
Can we have a little bit of discussion about that? I don't have any suggested changes to this agreement, and I'm really proud that the Decorah Community School District can partner with Saint Ben's. I just want us to be mindful as we revisit this next year with the new legislation. Just with unknowns with our enrollment and so much state funding going to. Private schools, I want us to be responsible with our public school funding and. Be responsible with it and to make sure that. It's a mutually beneficial agreement.
And I talked about this in the past, and it might have been a year or two ago, I don't remember, but just the fact that. At some point in time, we should have our food service folks break this down and just make sure we're not providing this under our costs. And we talk about, I know that we pay their teachers and they pay us back, but there's we have vans and all these other things that we use, so I think it'd be nice to. You know, if it needs to be updated, other people, other entities, and we all know that everything costs more to provide services, and we should. Break it down and and make sure we're. At least breaking even. Great idea. We review this every year, so it's 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 good to maintain a strong partnership with Saint Benedict's as as we've done in the past and. But yeah, we whenever year it gets reviewed, so that's very important. I think we approve it every year, but I don't know if there's a whole lot of review that goes on. You know, it's just been the same same agreement for year after year, so.
Yeah, well, Kathy said there's no change this year from what we had last year, right Kathy?
Correct, and we do review how many meals are are going to Saint Ben's. There's indirect costs, you know, we look at the food costs and how many meals are provided, but. We're not paying rent there, they're paying their utilities, so the electric. They have natural gas, whatever, to provide those meals. That's not a cost of the district, it's a cost to them, but then again, the cost for us is transporting those meals over there.
So it's 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 like Brian and me say, there's a lot to it.
Okay, so I just set up a reminder for us for June first of. Every following year, so we can review the direct and indirect costs and have them ready for this board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So would ask the court reporter to read back the the motion, but where we're at, I believe, is. We had a motion in a second, is that correct? Okay, so all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have fees and substitute pay to review.
Kathy, reworked some of these to make sure that they were. Among other things, want to make sure lunch got increased, but we gave the food service staff. Increases this year, but we want to make sure. A lot of food services made money during the pandemic and following years because lunch was. Covered by the federal government, so we want to make sure that stays out there. The substitute teacher salary was the other one that we just want to make sure that that increased and had a state competitive, so that was a. Hundred and thirty this year, and we're going up to hundred and thirty-five next year. Other highlights on the fees Kathy then?
No. Because the hot lunch program has got a positive balance, we don't have to fill out what they call P L E, a paid lunch equity. Form. The only thing that the directive that came from the state is we have to increase our adult meals to four dollars feet five cents. So if you take a look, there was a bigger jump there because the direct from state.
And Adam Riley reviewed the activity test.
Correct.
Should the substitute salaries be broken off separately from this? Shouldn't fees and salaries be two separate? Items to look at? Fees are fees to the students and the food services are different things, but it really doesn't have to do with. The salaries that we're paying the food service people. So it seems that the substitute salaries that we should probably review that in the committee that reviews the overall salaries for the employees.
We certainly could. I'm just off the top of my head, I'm thinking, we didn't review substitute pay for anything, but we could do it all in the committee that does that, sure. I don't recall, like reviewed sub bus driver pay or sub pair of pay.
There was, oh, and the lane was here, we discussed both of those. Quite a bit from what I remember, and we increased that thing, but I I think what you're getting at here is the timing of when. Or regrouping of putting it with the the fee schedule for the rest of the high school and versus.
Among other things, having it be two separate items, just you want to do fees one, and you want to do substitute rate.
Cause they're really your two two items completely, there's no no correlation between the two, so I think maybe break out in the future.
That's fine. I mean, and your recommendation can be two different recommendations as well. And you could recommend I approve the fees as presented. And then we can come back and. Approve the substitute pay, because I mean, you can do it all in one tonight, too.
Well, I, yeah. I'm not, I get my recommendation, my thought would be is, is this anybody made a motion? I think I make a motion to just pass them both as they are now. But the future salaries should be probably taken out of here and next year's salary should be. Those new salaries should probably be discussed and talk about salaries for other employees. And then we would just be authorizing this. These schedule as a fee schedule. Makes sense. But as of now, I'll make a motion that we approve the fee schedule and substitute salary.
So second.
I can second that, and I want one further comment and just, you know. I understand where you're coming from, trying to separate and so on like that, I just like to keep things simple for the superintendent and if they. I trust your judgment if he thinks welcome together. Okay, well, how we can use to do that, but that's. But we have more to say.
Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, picking up speed now, heading for the bread bids before we get to the milk. What's our bread bits this year?
Bits, these wordages came from Kathy, we only got one, Anna Gold, we didn't get. What we called Sarah Lee here.
Amber Bakeries.
Out of Milwaukee.
Do you recommend that we approve this?
Yeah, I recommend that we approve the one bid we got, yes.
So I make a motion that based on the recommendation superintendent approved the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four bread bids as presented that.
I'll second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And milk beds, as I recall, last year we had some discussion and with quality issues that caused us to. Switch our vendor last year. Assume we had better services here. Yeah.
I sent this to Chad and he didn't send me anything back, so I'm assuming everything's just fine with him.
And I got zero calls on our milk quality at my office, so. I don't know, the principals, they heard anything about milk quality this year? I like how Mr. Alvers is really concentrating on that one.
Ron, do you remember which vendor we had last year?
I don't recall, I'm just remembering that there was discussion of changing because we had a lot of. Issues with things like out of date or spoiled, and they wouldn't take them back and give us credit, so we.
Yeah, you have a good memory now that you dropped mine, I I remember something like that, it wasn't. I'm just wondering if it was Anderson Eric or was the. We missed vendor.
Well, I now I don't know, we had Anderson Erickson this year. So that's what I'm saying, like.
Alright.
Like.
So your recommendation is approve Anderson Eric, and the student, the principals are wrong, the thing is all okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Now, let's give you some serious educational stuff, we're being asked to approve a new social studies curriculum.
And so this is, this is a year for social studies curriculum to be on cycle, and so. When we got the bid, kind of pull up the amount. The amount was slightly higher than twenty-five thousand. And then.
For a couple of different vendors, so then we need to take it to the board to approve. The amount is over the twenty-five.
Yeah, I'll let you go, Brad.
So honestly, what you see here, a lot of work was done by our high school social studies department. In conjunction with Liz Fox or instructional coach, who was taking on taking on a role, lots of materials were piloted. And tried in the classroom across the continuum of what's available, it's not a traditional, just here's a book. Look at it, there's a lot of electronic, web-based resources, like, you know, things that you can use in one-to-one of the apps. So they spent a significant amount of time investing and diving into this year. Not just what was on a hardcover book, but truly what multimedia resources and things they could use with their their. I keep saying Chromebooks, but I know we don't, we we've got something better here.
Wow.
Wow, we used to only have in Chromebooks, MacBooks, so they've been able to actually really. Try that, and actually, a really cool story here, just to kind of not go too far in the weeds, but Carrie Kaufman is one of our high school social studies teachers. Had tried one curriculum in the fall that she felt was really good for her history classes, but in the face of like. Honoring the process, tried the other materials anyway in spring and liked those even more. So it just kind of spoke to the fidelity of really trying to process out. What you see here is a breakdown, not just of textbooks, but of all the other associated resources and things that kind of have come. When you think about how do you transform teaching and learning to the twenty-first century? You see a lot of evidence and and references to various things that you can use, digital courseware. Online things, things that pair well with our canvas, which is our online classroom. And so a lot of time and effort, and I remember Liz Fox joking, she's like, I'm gonna hand you two P O's that represent a year's worth of work. You know, it's like two pieces of paper, but that's the amount of time and effort and just vetting. And conversation that they had in P L C, that was basically how they spent a good part of their P L C this year. They really have a deep dive discussions about various resources and where they felt like the most impact was being had. And why and how that was having the best impact on learning in the classroom, so there's a couple here, the first one, the sun gauge. Not sure a hundred percent of that is not over the twenty-five thousand, but it's just kind of part of the overall thing, so included. The specific kind of rationale. There were some things there that, you know, coming in new. I thought it was really interesting that our U S history, U S government book was published in nineteen ninety. That would be dirt, dirt, Walker Bush era, and hadn't been updated since then. Another kind of ancillary factor to all this, we've got two new social studies teachers coming on board next year. So to set them up for success, so the timing worked out pretty well to be able to kind of have this curriculum, you know. So they were kind of thinking, especially towards the end, and we knew that we were gonna have both of them retiring. What might be some good materials and resources for somebody new coming on as well, so you can kind of see there where it's at, but also I would just kind of, you know. For whatever reason, certain things like government haven't been updated in decades, so they're long overdue, especially with a new teacher coming on board. So I would recommend the board approve these purchases so that we can get them ready for them to happen, ready for the fall.
And then, and so there's a couple of different documents, but then it comes together, you're recommending both the Savas.
Savas and H M H.
And the H M H, and so. Altogether, the threshold is fifty thousand, but both of these are slightly over twenty-five thousand. But altogether, the purchase is about fifty-two, fifty-three thousand. And this is gonna cover, this is gonna be online subscription and. Is there a hard copy to this?
Certain books for sure. So you can kind of see if you look at the actual quotes, a breakdown of what's being requested. So if we look at it, I'm just on H M H first, you can see here the number of books, like student licensing agreements, that's not cheap. You get the online digital access for five years, and then obviously you have to pay to review that every so often. You've got the actual textbooks, the licensure, I mean, it's just not just buying books anymore, you're buying all this other stuff to be able to have this access. So there's world geography, which is one of our classics, that's called Night Creators. World history, you can see a similar breakdown, you've got textbooks, you've got licensing agreements, digital licenses. Then modern world history as well, so by the time you get all those books together for all those different courses. You get what you get in terms of the overall cost. And then the same thing with the. Savas. And that was for the American government purchases, you can see there how it breaks down for that price per per book. High school level is not cheap, so you're talking, I remember when they used to give us three for college books over a hundred bucks, but now you're looking at a hundred and thirty bucks. A piece, each addition being a hundred and eighty-five dollars for one. That's what.
So in addition to investing or like potentially approving this now. If our, if you and your staff at the high school think that this digital subscription as well, worth that, we're looking at another ten thousand dollar or more.
Right.
Fee in five years.
No. That is kind of like, that's a good point, though, because typically what a model of the past would have been, you bought new hard copy books every seven years. And now that model's kind of outdated to this new digital model to where. How does that really fit? You've got the books, how much do you use the book, but then if you want the other part of it. You're going to have to sort of think about that differently than just buying books every seven years like you used to be able to.
And then.
And that's a sudden spot on observation now.
And that's something that I inherited at Central City, they were one-to-one school, and they thought they were gonna go digital and save all this money on textbooks. They found out that the subscriptions are usually about the same cost as the hard copy books, they actually swung the pendulum back, they were like. After five years, we don't have anything, so let's buy the book, cause after, but we also. That district wasn't replacing books maybe every seven years, maybe they were going every fourteen years, and to Brad's point, you know. American history book from nineteen ninety probably isn't super worthwhile.
Particularly given if it was published in nineteen ninety, it was written in the nineteen eighties, yeah.
And I think that's the hard part, is how do you assimilate a model of funding textbook and curriculum to the current what's available? And so you're going to have to think about, I mean, the other part of it is, everything now, especially at the high school, is so assimilated in the canvas. And so assimilated into the one-to-one, kids are so used to being on the log-on and find everything and find those and resources, that it would be hard. To just do hard copy books and really make it work for what the teachers are used to and what the kids are used to. But it is another cost that we're sort of assuming by agreeing to this, so that's a spot on thing to be able to say. I mean, we are gonna have to circle back in five years with these digital licenses and talk about how are they working. You know, and potentially come back with a purchase price for more digital licenses in the future.
And to Brad's point, having brand-new staff members in the substitute department. It's another good reason to make sure that we have structured curriculum for them.
Yeah.
The thing I followed that, we're we're replacing our hard copy history books, et cetera, with with this online.
Well, there are, there are some books that we're purchasing in conjunction, like hard copy books, but then the actual, to get access to what's available, not just through the book. But also on the online resources, you've got to pay extra for that with digital licenses. And I think about that as older regularly updated, so to the point of like, a nineteen ninety textbook, you're you're gonna be able to have. Access to current updated information much more regularly, but you pay for that, too.
Do, and the high school is not currently using a digital subscription for the, to support the social studies curriculum?
I would not be able to confidently say that we don't have any of that going on, right? I would be able to say the specifics of each one that we're doing or what we've been doing, but those. The ones that are being recommended are ones that we would not have or next year, the licenses.
I would note that. There's a whole, a series of purchases here that together exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, but alternatively, it could be viewed as. Purchases for class by class by class, in which case we would be asked to review anything.
Right, and that was, you know, we definitely, I wanted this presented, like, and I think it's an important thing, because overall, yes, you could do that. But there's an overall purchase, an amount of purchases being made, I think also. For the board to kind of hear that part of what's happening in education for sure isn't just hard copies of books anymore. And that really, this is kind of a model that most schools are going to, is more of the electronic digital subscription around. In conjunction with books that are hard copies.
And until such time as the board gets sick of seeing approvals for fifty thousand dollars or more, I'm gonna keep bringing them back, cause I don't wanna. Oh, let's break it into smaller pieces so we can buy it without board approval.
Right.
I won't do that.
That's good, good information here, and some kids, obviously, they're gonna do better with a book in their hand, others will do better with a crater. So cover all the bases. I make a motion to approve the social studies curriculum.
I'll second that.
Real discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we. Have a situation that we haven't faced previously, because it's kind of a product of. Changes of laws that have allowed for. Open enrollment situations where. In the past, we haven't been dealing with it.
Yeah, so, so we've got a request for for the board to waive the ninety-day sports ineligible requirement for a transfer-in student. One of the pieces of information I picked up, and not having this, was in talking to Adam, in the reverse situation, we had a student leave the district. We did grant that student immediate eligibility to go to the other district. Adam has worked with Wakon and put together. Kind of guidelines and and I shared those with the board, they're not specifically detailed, but it talks about with considering this, there's some questions. And it's, is a student in good academic standing, are they ineligible for any reason, and did they finish the academic year? Cause one of the other things that people do is they. Just transfer at a time that is ninety school days before the activity or sport they want to participate in. So if you're a basketball player in the Sierra Rapids metropolitan area, you. So if you're a basketball player in the Sierra Rapids metropolitan area, you transfer at spring break time. So then that puts you in a weird situation where you don't finish the school year and you don't, you know. You just kind of take advantage of the system that way to get your ninety days out of the way, but it's not a good educational system. So Adam worked with the A D at Wakon, they put those guidelines together, they've shared it with other districts, I. Also follow up, in preparation of this meeting, checked with the other schools in the Northeast Iowa Conference, saying, what do you guys do? Nobody had anything in in place, although when I shared out what Wakana Decor came up with as criteria, I got favorable reactions from. Other school districts saying, yeah, that that looks good, that we should have, you know, that criteria, cause we all know we're gonna have this, so. Um you know, and talking to, I'll gladly answer all the questions or that the board may have on this. Um I know this is kind of a different one for us as a board. As kind of Ron said, it's the first time we've, we've had this opportunity to grant someone immediate eligibility who's coming in. But we, we did it for a student who left, and then we were preparing to do it for another student who left, then that student ended up moving, so. Um.
Talk about how the legislation changed and when when it changed.
Well, the legislation changed, I guess it was last legislative session where um you could open a roll at any time. And it had to be approved, so we used to go with March first was the deadline, if somebody transferred after March first. They had to get approval from the district, and districts didn't have to approve it, and. You just, you would have different partners around your school district. I could name them in Lynn County, but this is being broadcast, so I won't, so you know, we just had different districts that we knew if they transferred in from those districts. At Central City that they, that the district wouldn't allow it, so legislation last year said, yes, you can open a roll at any point in time. And then on top of that, they added that if you get an immediate waiver for eligibility, you can be eligible for a sport right away. Which right away, you know, we as superintendent started thinking like, could you hop around for football and wrestling and. And track, I suppose, but you'd have to get those waivers each time for the districts. Um it's the ones we we know that have happened statewide are just the ones that have. Uh been the high-profile athletes, I think I shared with the board, there was a basketball player that went from Iowa City to. West Liberty that made the paper, um and I got a, you'd be eligibility, I had a board vote to do that. But I know it's happened in other districts as well.
And part of legislation that was just passed is that uh if both districts agree in writing. That um they agree to waive the ninety ninety-day eligibility requirement, then it can be immediate.
That is correct, and it's, it has to approve by the district that the athlete is leaving and the district, and the district that the athlete is uh enrolling in. So.
But as a student, you can open a roll at any time, that's that's changed, it'd be just a student.
Yeah, there there's, there were kind of talking about two things that kind of melded together, one is you can open a roll at any time, so you could open a roll November first. And then what they kind of they added to that was, oh wait a minute, I, and activities and sports, I don't want to be eligible immediately. So that's why uh they added the second piece, but yeah, as a student, you could open a roll. November first, December first, you know, anytime, and that's, that's new for the state of Iowa. And that's not to say we didn't have students open a rolling at any time, but they just took off the ability for the uh. Standing district to say no.
Yeah, what does the sending district have to say about this?
Uh well, they haven't had their board meeting yet, but it's anticipated that they uh in my conversation. With their superintendent, that they will approve immediate eligibility as well.
But uh so. Um we're just thinking about this from a pros and cons standpoint. You know, I want the district to be welcoming. In a rural area, declining enrollment is always a concern, are there any? Cons that we need to discuss? With accepting this immediate eligibility?
I think the cons from a statewide perspective are many in that. This is encouraging more hopping.
Right.
Uh from school to school for reasons that have nothing to do with the quality of the education. I think that's a problem that is, has been. Kind of, the line's been loosed by the legislature, and the line's eventually going to devour us all, to be dramatic about it. But from a perspective of our local district in this instance, I think the only con is. That if you have somebody coming in who is a talented athlete, that means that somebody who's been in your district. Is not gonna be getting as much playing time behind, you know, a person coming in, so there is that. But I guess some, yeah, then if you look at it from the perspective of, well, this person is now a student of our district, we don't have second-class students, we have. Students, so. But yeah. Um like I said, from my state, otherwise as a member of the Girls Athletic Union. We hear a lot of appeals and uh that's what has uh persuaded me over a. Number of months that this is a negative development for the future of. Interschool athletic athletics, which are supposed to be educational-based, or not a farm club for colleges after all. But uh in this instance, we're looking at the benefits of. You know, one student and what's in the best interest of that student and the other students that we have, so. Um I don't feel we have any choice but to approve it, even though I wish that it were not an option. I wish it statewide, you still had to sit your ninety days period, but that is not the case. So I can tilt the windmills all I want, but the simple fact of the matter is that the ship has sailed, so.
I might suggest that we, you know, approve the contingent bound upon uh uh on the ascending district uh making an approval.
So that's a given, if they don't approve, this is all.
But it's just as a way of. It's a way of saying that we're not active, as I understand it from the coaches, we're not actively going out and soliciting. Kids to, hey, cross the uh school boundaries, that was not the case at all. From what I've been told, and I believe that what I was told, and yeah, um now if this becomes a pattern, then.
Right.
We'll see what happens, but it's not my understanding of it, I I'm uncomfortable with letting the uh the uh. Immediate eligibility happen, just as I was comfortable with Laura, you know, uh student leaving Decorum uh two years ago. As immediate eligibility.
Yeah, question, so we're doing this, um we're approving this particular individual, particular student, direct. So we received any information um written about transferring into our district?
Uh they fill out open enrollment papers, the document that's in the board package is just their specific request to be eligible immediately. For sports, but they did the the paperwork and.
And we just received that.
Yeah, we got that prior to getting that, so we've communicated with them to say, no, and uh then you can, I mean. They kind of knew that they would be interested in having the option to be uh eligible immediately for athletics.
So he, this person has already been approved um to open a roll.
We, we, again, that's what the change of law.
There's no official approval, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So we don't have to have anything in knowing that 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 we have a new student coming to our district. That we have to approve prior to waiving a ninety-day situation.
That's, that's correct, with the change in open enrollment, so. Darlene helps me remember on my superintendent notes to put down all the open enrollments, just so you guys can know, and so. They get listed there every month, and we don't have those days where we used to. Go and go through the motions and approve all the open enrollments in and out, we just don't do that anymore, because now we we can't.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why I want to make sure that we have the paperwork to open enrollment before we.
Yeah.
Before we, you know, make a determination here on this, so thank you.
We approve the waiver to the ninety-day transfer uh um for immediate eligibility in athletics of a real receiving student.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Oh, uh I didn't have a big huge report this month, I just kind of had. Put in some stuff about borrowing capacity from John Berthmeister, I shared that earlier, um. If you missed, it's kind of Cindy alluded to it, the. E S A's or voucher program has already surplus, surpassed the expectation, so it's costing more money than than the uh. Then was budgeted out, uh but that wasn't costing before they approved it either, so.
Uh that's what happens when you intentionally don't want to know the implications of something before you're voting on it.
Uh, all right, so Ron just added a little editorial there, uh. Uh no, that's uh, that's, it's gonna be interesting, cause of course, as a reminder, there's part of that where the district gets. Like eleven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for every student that goes to St. Ben, but we won't get that next year. We'll get that the following year, and there's some folks that are already saying, hey, if this program costs too much money, if then they had to make cuts to it. We'll cut the public school portion. So.
Can they do that?
Through the legislature. Yes, they can.
No promises, more binding than the next vote.
That's right. So um just uh update on the roof at the middle school. Brett Turner, the new Garland person is gonna come out, I spoke to my phone, he kind of acknowledges that those armor light roofs weren't the best, and. He's gonna come and work on the potential solutions, but uh he did let me know that. It's seventeen years old and even though it wasn't the best roof system, uh there's lots of ways that the warranty could be invalidated, so. Not anticipating a warranted roof, so.
Garland is the folks who put it on?
Yeah. But in the same regards, when we look at our replacement, Garland has in-house engineers, and I'm gonna. I've kind of already told them, I'm like, I'm not gonna replace a bad roof with a Garland recommended replacement roof by the Garland engineer. Cause honestly, if I did that in the roof league, you guys should fire me.
This is a Garland guy who's in Look at It, they they put it on, we're gonna make some recommendations, we also probably will have our own.
I, yeah.
Or or somebody else look at it.
Just an independent third party who's who doesn't work for the same company that's gonna sell us the roof, which makes no sense in the world. So I think those are the highlights, and then as we talked about, the open enrollments are at the bottom there.
Okay, and saying none, let's move on to our financials.
And if you take a look at the balances, all of the balance uh accounts are up except for Pepper, and the Pepper is down because of the purchase of the bus garage. But I love the cash flow, it's very comparable, um the revenues are down three hundred and fifty thousand. But your expenses are down three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we're on the same path as last year.
And note, this will be the last payment under the old bus barn lease agreement.
Correct. We um we have to do some um calling at the end of June to turn over the inch, or the electricity to Bruning. And then I think they just said they had the LP tank filled up, so I'll have to figure out how to um have them take it out and. I don't know if they, if they can put it in our our. We can call a pitching shed, or if they're just gonna put it in storage and show that we've already put it back.
And yeah, then I went out, looked at some of the leftover materials that we're gonna, cause they're school property. And we don't want them in our new bus barn, post them for sale, even though they may, some of, a lot of the stuff may not be worth much, but. We want to make sure we're not disposing of district property without at least vetting it, and then. I reached out to Keith Bruning about doing a walkthrough before we turn the burning back over.
Have we moved a lot of stuff in the new bus building?
Yeah, yeah. Went outside of the buses, the inside looks pretty empty.
And were the bus drivers at the last day of school gonna drive them onto the.
Well, I thought they were, but they didn't. Yeah.
They understand that the bus drivers had a pickaxe or something out there.
Yeah, there was a, there was a little cookout on the last day, yeah, tire.
And they, was that at the new?
That was at the new facility, yeah.
And maybe shadows not again item of, we talked about maybe having an open house for the community out there sometime as well.
Yeah, we talked about that, maybe having that in uh late July or probably early August.
Okay, well, seeing nothing further on the agenda, we'll declare the meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.